Hi, Terry Borough, and I'm in Murray Street. I live at Murray and Third. I understand the reason why I'm wanting to remove the stop signs. I'm not necessarily against that. My only request would be to either A, remove, maybe to approve. So if there's still something to slow people down, the horn stalls become so sometimes. There are a lot of kids on Murray Street, especially where the street seems to kind of narrow down, and there's really only room for one part of passing the time when there's cars coming both sides of the street. You can't really see kids if they all of a sudden run out into the street. There's a lot of younger kids that just don't think. So I would really appreciate it if there would still be some sort of measure to try to slow down the traffic on that street. Thank you.
That would be on the move side of Murray Street school?
It would be only from the other side towards the sixth.
So south side.
South side.
South end of the street. They're an incumbent of the board of public.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really don't have a problem with this. My concern is you pay a professional police chief to give you direction and advice, and yet I've not seen anything in the package. Previously, those signs were put up because of his recommendation, and now we're taking them down just because he changed council people. You need to let him address the situation in that area and see what his recommendation is. You people are throwing up stop signs in one place and taking them down in another when the police chief told you what the circumstances and what ramifications would be there, but you're not doing that. That's what my concern is, Mr. Mayor. Before you go on this, you need his input.
Thank you.
I believe this information was provided. It was the last thing you put. Move right with the mayor and our engineer. I move to approve. This is just a hearing. Pardon? We're just here to hear.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Don't shut up. I'm in a hurry to get out of here.
Why are we off?
You can leave now.
If there's any other public comment or comment from the board or both of the hearing, and we will move on. Item nine, discussion for possible action pertaining to the public hearing. I have one question. I'll read discussion for possible action for approval to remove stop signs at the following locations, Murray Street and First Avenue, Murray Street and Third Avenue, Murray Street and Annapolis.
I'd like to make a comment, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate Terry coming in with a thoughtful idea of speed bumps. You know, of speed bumps, these are put in a divot in the road, you know. So I think when the sheriff was here for the last meeting, he reported over the period of time, you know, there may be a minor fender bender. No pedestrian versus auto accident has happened in the act. So when we, he mentioned about the speed limit, and we said, well, we need to have patrol. If the average speed limit was 27, it's got to be lower, you know, we got to get more patrol out there. And they sort of have a leeway on that. So I do appreciate that there, and we will study that, you know, to see what we can do. Those ripple strips they put up on the highways for construction, that may be an idea, other it messes up the snowplow. That's the problem with that, you know. People just need, in my opinion, just need to slow down, be aware of children. You know, children's sign, you know, there's a school sign up there. But I really appreciate it. You came here with the issue, and you offered a solution. Thank you.
I was going to say the same thing. Thank you. You know, the speed bumps or something like that, that is really important because it's scary, and she's absolutely right. The kids run out, and you just don't even know where they came from. So I think it's also good to see whatever else that we can do that's going to force guard, too.
Well, I think it also should be noted for the record once again that we've repeatedly been told by the sheriff as well as our engineer that traffic signs does not recommend stop signs to be used with speed control devices, but there are a number of other things, I think. Maybe we could look at whatever those controls could be. If that be the case, put the item at hand here.
So can we, you know, how would we request?
We would have to put that on the table. This one is just for the way we're going to stop. What is the plan of the board?
I make the motion to approve this final.
Motion and final. Do I have a second? Second, and then one second. The county spearheads a further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Terry, please hold order. Item 11, item's for discussion, possible action only of the EDC council. They can send agenda. We have minutes from the 26th and the 29th, and those from the 4th, from Tereya, and July 7th.
However, I have a request from industry business.com. If everyone can speak into their mics and call up their issues at the last recording that we called here.
Do we know?
Just by my two notes, at the, under July 7th, 2022, bill paid LP insurance of $243,000 in my dollars, co-owners of that, part of that company, so that we exchange the payment on bill. Okay? So.
Also, the president of our department, I think that declaration I was, any bills paid on behalf of volunteer fire department, the city duty fire department, I believe, are due paid to the residents, but I feel I have a just duty to either approve or disapprove of.
I'd also like to disclose that my husband is a member of the volunteer fire department, but I don't think any of these decisions affect him independently any more than any other member of that.
Now, I have one question, man. On the other, on the other veterinary bill for $1,562 for feline, how many cats have they been due?
I have information I'm bringing to you next week. I don't.
I'm sure she very recently, which doesn't. All right. That's all I have.
Okay. Turn over the questions, I'll handle them for approval and answer them. I'll make the motion. Motion from councilman, all in a second.
Good.
Second from councilman's lines, I think further discussion with the note of extension from July 7th. July 7th, sir, councilman's here. I'll copy the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Terry, please hold order. Item B, I had a request to take number seven first, so that our building official can use number one on the business tonight. So we'll start with seven, three business, council members, city building official Peterson, this is the column. First reading proposed ordinance, seven, four, six, bill number 2023-02, updated, and then title nine of the EDC code, thereby adopting operative building standards, adopting codes for residential planning, electrical, mechanical, energy, conservation, and off-site modular re-aggregation construction, and providing other matters properly relating thereto.
I appreciate the accommodation. This is, proposal is something the county institutions may adopt as well, so it's really just to bring everybody together, so we have consistent set of expectations. One I'm most proud of is the MHI ICC off-site manufactured one. As noted, the state has passed a law requiring municipalities to create districts that allow accessory building units, container homes and off-site manufactured tiny homes are, you know, kind of all arranged with terms of these accessory building units. So I think that will be to help, you know, creating expectations for folks that they have to be capable of.
I have one additional, I have to turn it back under, line dash one, that's two, paragraph B, last sentence. Your last sentence is gender specific, and I think it should be de-sheated.
Line dash one, dash two.
Yeah, under B. His report shall continue to prepare as ever, so it's he, it should be he-sheated.
Sure.
Everything but that. It's not gender specific. All right. Everything else is good on that.
Do you have any questions and additions from the council? Is there anything else we need to do here? I turn it to them. So this session will be through. Okay. Thank you. This is deep, right?
I agree.
I will return back to item one.
Are you?
It's a discussion. Your question.
It is. It's free. I'm going to do more work than required. Gosh. Be careful, right?
Item one, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action, acceptance of councilman Oliver's resignation, as the city being representative on the region transportation commission received effective July 7th, 2022.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I'd like to respectfully resend that.
Okay.
I had quite a discussion today. I'll steal today.
Okay. I'm happy for his stay if the council's happy to take all this resignation or order directly. What do we do with this?
I'd like to watch this item.
Do we do that?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion required. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from councilman's Congress. All in favor of watching the resignation item?
Aye.
Any opposed? Terry, please hold order.
I would apply to the next item.
Okay. Item two, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action, appointment of council member Kurt Grayson as the city being representative on the region transportation commission. I'm sure all of this agreement is enough. I will understand motion to watch this item.
So move.
Second.
Motion from councilman Spears, second from councilman Lewis Harper. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Terry, please hold order. Item three, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action, annual performance evaluation of city treasurer, HR director, Jeanette Trask, including but not limited to consideration of character, alleged misconduct, professional competence, or physical or mental health. Possible action includes, but is not limited to termination, suspension, demotion, reduction of pay, reprimand, promotion, endorsement, engagement, retention, or no action. John Jacob, Jacob never shows. So I believe the council's free to make comments. There were some questions and notations submitted by councilwoman right at the beginning that were delivered to the February 12th director for considerations. We should be prepared for that. And I guess.
Did the rest of the council get a copy of it? Any questions? You know, I tried to keep it brief to cover the, cover everything I could. So again, you know, this, you know, because I've been in that position for many years, you know, actually got her involved in it and so forth, so I've got some knowledge on this question. So I'll, you know, I'll start off with just general comments and then some recommendations that I feel need some corrections based on, allowed by this thing. The monthly financial report continues to reflect the positive financial growth, the city's financial growth, a reflection of giving employees the buying on the budgets they develop. Last year, the council, after you were, you were given the disresponsibility of ASR director, you approved an additional, the city approved additional acquisition related to financial responsibilities. Additional employee was hired. Could you describe the duties that you were able to hand off to that person to perform the public's job description?
The two main ones that were kept were the treasurer's position that weren't part of the job description for the treasurer was the payroll and accounts table. So she was able to take that on.
You went for payroll?
And accounts table.
And they did. Okay, is that working out quite well?
Very well.
Okay. I think, you know, as this lady does get more and more involved in this, I think there's other stuff you can have out there.
All there are things I cannot do already.
Because, you know, if we go into the future, I think you're going to get overwhelmed. After your monthly report came out today, you're going to need to put more on your system.
She is. Yes, she is. She had the report to a pre-price of your request, but as I knew she's been heavily learning to sell, I mean, she can.
And I believe also some of her duties under your direction should be able to move downstairs. I know she works downstairs, but maybe there's.
She's big cross-train.
Cross-train, so that's another area she does.
Yes, she's great cross-train down there. I think I've made it clear I would like to train her under the HR, and I've got plans to have her go along with me to some of the HR stuff and take some HR training.
Okay, moving along. With the introduction of the R of revenue, then hindsight always being 2020, what would you have suggested or recommended differently to the council?
At this point, I wouldn't recommend you suggest any difference. This is something that is totally due to all of us hiring, getting and ready to help with it, I think was the smartest thing we did. And they're still going to be helping with it because there is traffic coming up on it. I will be more comfortable once the audit is done, and we are doing everything the way we're supposed to be doing, I feel like we are. It's just going to be just sample approval once we get through the audit. Will we get through without any, I don't want to say write-ups, but there's, that's what we came for, just to find things, so.
Okay, the following are areas that will prove them based on many years of experience as the city treasurer are as follows. Once again, this is my thoughts, my opinion. Budget benefits this year are almost every department greatly understated. They follow mostly by calculated percentages of the wages and salaries. While a budget is the best estimate, benefits should have been more on target by using appropriations, the budget shortfall was correct, but again, it's not a shortfall of money, but I discussed with you through the period of time, because I've seen you monthly on this, that was a simple math thing, you know. Say your percentage is.
There are so many unknowns, and I feel like you know this. There are so many unknowns that can factor into this that, yes, I would love to be more on route on these things, but it's not going to always happen.
But the thing was, on most of the benefits, that'd be for, I can't remember the exact department, you'd have $50,000 of wages, $2,300 of the benefits.
Well, and I would.
Again, you know, the percentage was.
You're giving me things that I have.
Well, what I'm saying is, you feel I both went over those. So I understand, but to look at, when I go through and receive the variance, that's why we have this financial report, to look at the variance, it's supposed to be 11% variance for that period of time, and you're at 80%, we got an issue. Again, appropriations over time takes care of, but I'm just stating a visual on it, it should have been taught. So.
For the benefit of the council, for my questioning, could you elaborate on some of the variables that go into that?
There's a variable, a big one is on the insurance where we pay 10%. I try and always do a 15% increase, but what we don't know is the becomes and goes of the people, which we've had in street turnover in the last year. And I can budget for who's there now, but whoever shows up to replace these people could be a family, and I've only budgeted for a single person. The percentage could be, increase on our premiums could be more. I do know that workers' comp went way up more than I predicted. So there's variables, and that's why you have appropriations and obligations that are a goal to you, and hopefully help with these unexpected shortfalls.
Again, bottom line, it worked out great, but it's just something for the future. You know, when you start training DES and some of this budgeting stuff, which is going to be important.
Well, I will say she hasn't agreed to that.
She has not.
I'm not interested in HR, but she's concerned.
Say that again, she's not interested in the financial side?
She's not sure.
Okay, the water fund revenue count, the downside of the improvement surcharge, in my opinion, budgeted based on history of past years, turned out to be one of the several skeletons that keep servicing from the past administrations. This account should have been researched so you know what and where the revenues were being received from. The problem was corrected. I did suggest to do the simple schedule we developed, we'll stop right there on that problem, I think we're going to. You know, again, I've done the budget, you know, when you get into the motion of the water fund right toward the end of your financials, it's next amount every year, haven't changed much, do it again. But as the skeleton popped out of cotton, that should have never had a revenue budget in that account. I mean, based on what it was there for, should never have been there. We corrected the issue. But again, I think we get into the mechanical side of things without, get a little more thought into this, you know, because what is, I mean, you're putting a number in the budget, you know what that number was or is from past history, the last many, many years you've done this, it's been there, because that problem went for over five years until we resolved. So that's the comment I have on that, then. Okay? Okay, and I did suggest that you, a simple schedule be developed for the council's use to show what contracts agreements long-term debt such as the city have. If this was done, as I suggested, I have never seen it, because that right there, because we're going to have, we got a new council member here, even current ones, plus we got two more coming on, and they're going to be overwhelmed, just like Jerry Lynn said, there's so much to learn, you know, when they come in, they just don't walk in and just sit down, they don't know what our debt is, what their, the whole process. And I think it's just a simple thing. I think this account going about to that water department account on this payment that didn't even be happening, it would trigger that, so we didn't need that, you know. Again, I know if you look in the financials, the budget, or the audit, you'll see our long-term debt, but does she know that? Does she know that? Do the two new people coming on?
That was part of the budget.
Yeah, it is part of the budget, but you got.
Yeah, the budget that you guys approved.
But what I'm saying is, you got two new council people coming on, they won't know that. So I think it's the simple schedule you got, just like you summarized in the debt management thing.
And there's another, it's in the debt management.
Okay, do you want that?
Can I add something to that? Because I had this conversation about Jeanette, and what I like that she said that she has done is that, because I said the same thing, there are just things, I don't know many new people going on, and she is going to give us a class, so to speak, on the things that we need to know, because even listening to you now, you've done the job, so you know much more than I will ever know, but I'm glad that Jeanette has said, yes, you guys need to know more, and so in the fall, when people come on, she, she will give us a lesson, so to speak, so that we are a little bit more aware of what's going on. And that's a, that's a big deal, so thank you.
Thank you, bro.
We'll do that.
Thank you for bringing that up. It's a simple thing that you guys worked out, that's fine. Instead, in fact, with my opinion, that you only make changes if and only the changes are approved by the council. That's some of the conflict we've had discussion, link before the council, don't make the decision. But according to your job description, the very last sentence in your job description, advises the mayor, city council, and city clerk of current and future city financial stats, that's in your job description, so you can come to us and advise us, but we don't know, I mean, you look at the financials every day, and you need to analyze it and say, hey, we got a problem coming up here, or this, this, and this, you know. And that's what I'm trying to do, is mentor your train of thought into something not so mundane, repetitive, over and over and over. That's what I mean by that comment there. So moving on, your monthly financial report needs to be improved of what Aaron calculates, found report printing, have another staff member look at it, you know, it, 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 once again, I think it's a mechanical thing you're doing, it's just popping it in there, and creative of changing your report format might be considered, I'm not telling you to do it, so it's not just a change in figures or percentages. The change in a person's daily monthly paradigm should be thought over, you know. Don't be afraid to tute your achievements, you know. I mean, I think I chatted with you a long time ago about paradigm class, just to change your paradigm, picking a different road to work changes your whole train of thought. And I will say, the report I looked at today, thank you very much, that's a very thorough report, and I understand it completely. The HR part of it was kudos, with fireworks going on. So that's, you know, that being said, I don't know if anybody proved, I don't care. I'm not no English teacher, I don't know if, but that was a very good report, so.
Double like it. Anyways.
Okay, so I don't know if any of my fellow council members discussed the financial conditions, drives over a regular basis, but I feel very responsible ability to be always aware of the financial position in the city. And you, you've known me for many, many years, we've sat in the same chair together, we know what the deal is, and I look at this, and when we approve the budget, I approve, but then I like to see, you know, what I think, and you told me, you don't always have the greatest ideas, you have a lot of ideas, but that doesn't mean they're the best.
Now, what I said is we can have different ideas.
Yes, and if you're willing to sit there, know the know, and argue, that's fine, because if you roll over, you must not really care about your ideas. So I encourage an open discussion and so forth. So with that being said, what do you consider your biggest challenge in keeping the city financially sound?
The biggest challenge is to stand on top of it, educating everybody on it, and myself. It's just making sure that we're doing our due diligence on the purchases that we make, putting programs in place to replace the big ticket items as we can, so that we're not going through these make and break downs and have to come up with the money in hindsight. And it's working with the employees, like I said, the buying, and I think we need to invest in our employees a little more. But it's just a matter of staying on top of it, and if there's questions from the council to answer the next question, is come in and ask.
Next question, what would you like the mayor and city council to support of your position?
A little more open communication, come into my office and ask.
Okay, and I made a note that much of that, except that the R is in. Right now, we have leftovers from first project money, $830,000, now we just had another And I'm sure you don't, but I will ask, do you feel that's, you know, that's over a lot of money, just under $4 million, okay? About $3 million or 2.6 of $800,000. Do you feel, you have a feeling like, hmm, we can just coast, because we can, the way that $10 million thing, that thing, we can use it anywhere, but do you?
No, because it's not sustainable. The whole purpose was, and what your goal is, is to give the majority of it back to the community, but the way we've chosen to do recorded, it ends up in our end equipment list. It is money that the city general fund gets to spend based off of what revenue can be recorded. I have put $2 million and plus in the community support expense account to be used for the community. So now, it, it wasn't budgeted that way, so I, I don't, we can't look at it, I don't think that contributes, that I'm thinking more cruisy, because what we do in the end, that money will be spent hopefully mostly on the community, but anything else we do has to be sustainable in the future.
Okay, on the same topic, are you, I'll just throw something, you know, I've already had some residents coming, hey, you got all that money, can you spend it over here? You know, we got a process in place now, and I'm sure, I'm hoping that you will stand your ground for that comment you just made, you know, because, for example, that idea that you're out there about the fuel tax, you know, what the heck, who takes on it? It's going to help the public on our roads, you know, that's, this is some of the worries I have about all this money, because this is a once in a million year for the city to be able to do this, and I've discussed with you, the mayor, is we have to do this something for the people of the city, so we have to, don't get blinders and look about all the other stuff going on, that's why, but if it's a comforting feeling, the city has never had this kind of money.
No, it hasn't.
And so.
And quite honestly, can you throw suggestions, like, I'm happy to do that, but what I need you guys to understand, I'm doing two jobs here. It's going to take some time. I prioritize what I'm doing, and it doesn't always mean what you want, you're going to get instant gratification, I can't promise that. I'll do what I can, which is always going to be what's best for the city.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any questions on this part of the performance evaluation on treasurer from the mayor of the council? Okay, down in HR, that's real quick. During dealing with both sides of the collective bargaining unit for the city, we've been very successful, agreement reached in time, kudos, that can be a pleasant thing. I for one do not have enough feedback from you on exactly what you do in this area, make comments, recommendations, once again, creativity and repair of some of the staff and officials, to at least myself, and understanding what are you doing in this area of HR. The reports you put out today, bingo, spot on, and it, it, I mean, I like to know, you know, people, we're having a hard time keeping employees employed. The fire teams have a terrible time, you know, that's a specialized thing, I'm not saying a person at the landfill isn't any more unprofessional or whatever, but we need to do something with this report to get an idea, we're having turnover, why? We need to sit down and figure out. We need to sit down and figure out, is it a lack of the dinero, or, I mean, you would think job security would be a plus. So the turnover rate and the, and the fact that, you know, you mentioned you're willing to expand your knowledge, yes, you have, you mentioned that, you mentioned that in, in there. It wasn't really.